Great, okay, I think we're rolling. I think the technical complications have been worked out. So I want to, it is now 7:31. This is July 22, 2021, work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall for the first time in 16 months. So, author Mark and everyone, thank you. It's a, it is a special moment for us to all be back, trying to get back to normalcy. We are happy to have you back in the audience. We are also live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. And to those who are joining us from wherever you are, welcome. We ask those to present to please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. And as always, there will be several opportunities for the public present to be heard, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. So Michelle, if you can please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the July 20, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great, thank you very much. And Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Here, can you hear me okay?
Steve, can you hear us? Can you?
I can hear you.
Okay, all right, which is good for the record. So Sasso is here.
Sure. Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wolsinski is absent, and Mayor Bernstein.
Thank you very much, Michelle. So, public comment, as you know, we opened the meeting to the public three times. So this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have a three-minute time limit to address the governing body.
Mayor, may I ask a question? The comments regarding the water.
So.
Mark Savistano, 22, Freeland Place.
Hi, Mark.
Comments regarding the water, should save till the end?
Yes, please. Thank you. Right, because we do have during our regular session, Councilwoman Homan will be giving a presentation. We have the resolution for at that time, and that will be the time for comment. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? You'll have two other opportunities. Okay, not seeing anyone. We close it to the public. Administration Agenda Review. We do, it's a fairly, I don't want to say light, it's a big, it's an important agenda, but there's not a lot, there's not in terms of density, there's not a lot there. But we do have a presentation by the Allen Dell Water Committee led by Councilwoman Homan. We do have second reading and public hearing of ordinance 21-10, as well as four resolutions on the consent agenda. And I think there might have, one might have been inadvertently not added to the agenda when previously posted. So the fourth item in the consent agenda is 21-196 Authorized Solicitations of Proposals for Storm Drain Inlet Repairs as Needed. So those are the four items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any agenda items? No? Okay, great. Not seeing any. We will now go to our committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As far as calls into headquarters, we had 8,191. 911 calls, we had 929. Fire Department calls, we had 98. And AVAC was 233, that is up to date. The Junior Police Academy class ended, they had 60 cadets, and they had 40 waiting. So it's become quite popular. They had things like the helicopters, SWAT team. They went to MetLife Stadium. I don't know how they packed it all in the four days, but they, I asked Kevin to send the mayor and council videos. If not, it is on the police Facebook page. So I suggest you watch the video, it's quite entertaining. Public Safety, Jamie had appendicitis, so she's going to be out for about another three weeks. We discussed putting temporary signs for temporary parking for pickup only in a couple areas downtown. We discussed possibly having a closing Main Street there to have Dine Out possibly in August and September. And that's about it, Mayor.
Right, and I did watch the video. I mean, the video was something else. It's what they did, I mean, to all the officers that were involved, and those young men and women who got the opportunity, I mean, just great. So kudos to everyone involved in that. Councilman Sasso, can he, will he be able to give his report?
Can you hear me?
Yep, Steve, we can hear you.
Okay, Steve, so if you, if you're prepared at this time, would you like to give your report?
I would. Do you hear me okay? Just give a thumbs up. Okay, great. So the Land Use Committee met this morning at 8 o'clock. I want to thank Mr. Kissner for plowing us through an agenda. We got done at about 8:45, which was good, it was nonstop. Nothing urgent to report. We've got some stuff on the agenda, which we'll be introducing maybe in the next couple of weeks, but it was all good for the most part. So thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you. And was that today? Did we, we started the day there?
I know, it's hard to believe, right? It feels like it was a week ago, it was today. 12 hours ago.
Great, thank you, Councilman Sasso. Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
I would. So the Water Committee continues to be very busy, and tonight, we, as Mayor Bernstein had said, we have ordinance 2110, and I certainly feel very proud and appreciative of what the Water Committee and our experts, all the work that has been done to bring this ordinance to a second and final reading tonight. So I'll be doing a presentation to, for the council and anybody from the public that is here. Suez, you know, has been a good partner in helping us bring this process to where it is today, too. Anybody who was at the last council meeting knows that we welcome James Fahey as our new Suez Water Operator, and Ron and Lane have expressed that, you know, he's been great to work with, and that he has begun to fill Jeff Pichonich's shoes in a positive way. So James will be continuing monthly operations meetings with Lane and Ron and myself. Normally, I won't be attending tomorrow as I'll be away.
Next Friday, 30.
Next Friday. Oh, so maybe I will be, never mind. So I'll save the rest of it for my presentation. And then if I may, may I read Amy's report?
Of course you can.
Short and sweet, although Amy's always got a lot going on in facilities. Talking about 220, the front building, which is where the Borough Hall will be, the site plan application did pass the County Planning Board on July 12. There's a 45-day waiting period from that date, and then we should be able to close. And shortly thereafter, the demo will commence for the 220, the 220 building. And the building of the new Borough Hall and the residential development will most likely start in the beginning of 2022. Big numbers. Crestwood Lake, operations are going very well at the lake. Many residents are enjoying it, it's packed all the time. We certainly have been grateful for good weather, and many thanks to the managers that make everything run so smoothly, as well as all the employees at Crestwood. And tonight, I know we're all here, but it's sundown, they are showing Jaws. So in case we get done, you know, at a decent hour, perhaps people can scoot over and get a little Jaws. We did have, the next band is coming this Saturday, the 24th, at 7:00 PM, and that will be under the pavilion, so not the band shell, but the pavilion. And it's Tim Geisen, he plays all sorts of music and takes requests, so that will be a lot of fun for anybody that's around in Allen Dell to attend. We did have the soft opening of the band shell last weekend. It was a great showing, the space worked out well. And Amy has been working hard planning a Crestwood Band Fest with multiple bands to be launched in early October, really for the grand opening, so that will be fun. The playground up at Crestwood, the group has spoken with the playground designer this week, and should have some preliminary sketches for some additional things, and we'll look forward to that moving forward. 9/11 Memorial, just a reminder, is the 20th year anniversary. There's been notifications sent out about the Paver Program, so that new residents and, you know, residents alike have an opportunity to be part of this beautiful memorial. So many people have already responded, and will have them completed by the 9/11 memorial service this year. Paver requests are due by July 30. So, and for the ceremony, planning is going well. Amy, you know, does such a great job, so thank you to Amy, and it was fun giving her a report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole?
Sure. Short report this evening. The Administration, Finance, and HR Committee was supposed to meet this evening, but we postponed it till Monday. Nothing really earth-shattering on the agenda, a few irons in the fire. We're going to talk about capital budget, some housekeeping items, but therefore I'll have a more in-depth report for our next meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Strouch is not here tonight, so I'm going to give my mayor's report. Welcome back, everyone. This is momentous for us. It's great not only to see you, but to feel like we're looking at COVID in the rearview mirror. We're here minus a few colleagues. For the convenience of those who prefer to watch from home, we're also live streaming the meetings going forward. For the people who want to make comments, they'll need to attend in person, but the livestream option allows those not in attendance to follow along. We'll be posting links on our website. And speaking of our website, it launched last week, I think to critical acclaim. I think it's a lot, we've been talking about it for a while, and I know so many people use it as the conduit to the Borough. It's more updated, it's a, there's an interactive platform, and it will be much more user-friendly. Special thanks to Director of Communications, John Gill, and Webmaster Tyler Yakarino for all the work to get it up and running. So, see you guys. Thank you very much. It's been a little over two weeks since Borough Hall reopened to the public. We're happy to see the residents again, but as I said at the last meeting, and kind of entying to the website, there's so much that you can do from home, that we try to make it so that you don't have to come in. For such things like applying for permits, licenses, paying taxes, registering for Crestwood Lake, that can all be done through the website, and this will save time and trips to Borough Hall. On a less happy note, property taxes are due on August 1 with a grace period, sorry, Alyssa, with a grace period to pay without interest until August 10. And what we are going to do, just as in the past, and we've done it in the past, and prior mayors have as well, in July and August, sometimes it becomes a little slower, so with less on the agenda. So we are canceling the August 12 Mayor and Council meeting. Our next meeting will be August 26, a meeting in person here at Borough Hall. So that is it for my mayor's report. If we want to go for staff reports, Attorney Ray Wiss?
Thank you, Mayor. I did notice the symmetry of the Borough having Jaws this evening while Sharkfest is going on on Discovery Channel. So somebody has a good sense of humor, I think, on that. And I do want to say that, especially since, you know, we have a live streaming audience, and I know the governing body wouldn't toot their own horn on this, but, you know, when mention is made, both by Councilwoman Homan and by Councilman Sasso of meetings, in addition to all of the interface that my office has with members of the governing body and members of the staff during the course of the working day, this week, for instance, there were four meetings that started at either 7:30, 7:45, or 8 o'clock in the morning, all of which lasted to 9 o'clock involving some combination of members of the governing body. And while four times in four days may be a little bit unique, two to three times a week is not unique at all. So it's a lot more than the every other Thursday meeting that goes into this, and all these committee reports are just a reflection of the hard work above and beyond that the governing body does, week in, week out. So a lot of time spent and a lot of big projects going on, which basically led to my two weeks since the last one being involved with the Water Committee, where I would have to say substantial, substantial progress has been brought into the project taking shape. And I think, you know, Councilwoman Homan's presentation will show the state of the project. And I think the key here is to put it in the type of shape, and, you know, tonight the ordinance is scheduled for adoption, to put it in the type of shape where informative presentations and good information can be conveyed probably post Labor Day in the fall to the community. And I think that that's the key. I mean, right now, we're going through a lot of procedural machinations to negotiate with Suez, to work out business details, to work out legal details. Ryan has been probably next to Councilwoman Homan, the most integral part of that team in shaping it up. But tonight I view as more of a process step, bringing us one step closer to then being, having a very good discourse with the community come the fall on the particulars, so that everyone can evaluate on their own what's involved. So that's been a lot of what we've had over the last two weeks. Certainly with Ron, we've been involved in a lot of contract, and I'd say maybe more than typical property maintenance and property-related issues. You know, the Borough is called on quite regularly to interface between homeowners, whether it's to problem-solve or to resolve disputes. And, you know, obviously, part of our job, you know, working with Ron, is to try to get those things resolved at the lowest common denominator. So there's been several of those matters that have been pending. Certainly, the Clerk's Office has been involved with that. And speaking of the Clerk's Office, the inevitable Oprah requests, which has just now been a part of the Borough's existence, it's less and less a matter of the public wanting to be informed. It seems to me that most of the Oprah requests, or more and more of them, have become business tools where businesses are reaching, using the Borough to get information, to form their own business solicitations, get pricing information, get contract details. So a lot of it, a lot less than one might anticipate, is for the benefit of an informed public, and much more of it is basically become a business tool. But unfortunately, the Borough Clerk's Office becomes the interface in the middle of all of that, and often then has to reach out to other departments, whether it's the Construction Department, the Police Department, to get the information that's required. So that's, you know, certainly an ongoing thing that occurs every week. And then, while 220, 230 was a little less front burner in the last two weeks since our last meeting, I would say that as we move toward August, that particularly as it pertains to 220, will kick up big time as the second half, if you will, of that project begins to take shape. Right. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, and Ray, thank you. And yes, a lot of things you said resonated with me, right? When I say that they're, you know, a light agenda, or we're going to skip the meeting, by no means is that a reflection that we are idle and nothing is going on. I mean, it's like the iceberg, right? Up here, we're only touching, you know, the top, but there's miles of action beneath the, you know, behind the scenes or beneath the service are going on.
We could take the Titanic down.
That's right. And for instance, Councilman Sasso, the Land Use, you joined us today. I mean, there are 10 issues there, and they're not, I mean, they're not going to, but we're trying, we do the best we can. It's all hands on deck, everyone's working, there's a lot going on, you know, and to Councilwoman Homan and Ryan here, who was, he's been integral. The amount of work that, to get us here, I mean, just the amount of hours, the amount of time. So thank you to you, and thank you to everyone. Michelle, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Just in addition to assisting the residents this summer, the Clerk's Office is really trying to organize and streamline processes. And so I just wanted to thank Ron, and Tatiana, and John, and Tyler, and our summer help Judy and Miles for all their hard work. We're really making a lot of progress, so thank you, you guys. And also, I just wanted to recognize John and Tyler and Tatiana for figuring out the livestream. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes coordinating and discussions and, you know, testing things out. So I just wanted to thank them, and I really love working with you guys, so.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you. That's great. No, and I'm at the risk of stating it again, I mean, what collectively everyone did in order to get us here, I mean, right, we were, everyone was throwing a curveball that we had never seen before, you know, in COVID, but we, I don't want to say we, we made it through it like it's behind us, but, you know, thank you to everyone, just complete team effort that navigated Allen Dell through. Alyssa, would you like, do you have anything to report? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ron?
Couple DPW issues. Tonight, I appreciate, I hope you guys will be approving the resolution for storm inlets. What we started back in 2019 with Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority, is they, some, they come up with their truck, they inspect, they clean 25, 20, 25% of our storm drains inlets, and they give us a report on what ones need to be replaced. By approving this tonight, I'll put it out to bid, and we will repair, replace the 20 or 25 of the ones that I'm concerned about. That'll be great. We're going to pack, we're going to do another six tons of patching this weekend. Due to some injuries and some illnesses, DPW is shorthanded in half this week. Guys, we'll be back next week, so we have a list of patching. Patch will be done next week. We're going to be using about six tons of asphalt next week. That brings up the 20 tons of asphalt have been put down this season already. The others, the storms we had, normally West Crescent does flood, as we know, and recedes.
Right.
But these last two storms, West Orchard was worse than West Crescent. We reached out to myself and Mike, Dylan, OEM Director, reached out to the county, great cooperation with them. Truck was up here yesterday, cleaned out West Orchard, West Crescent. Going to see a big difference. Hopefully we don't have any more storms, but we probably sure we will. But those storm drains are, those storm lines are, been flushed and jetted, and they're in good shape. We will be, we had some list of some trees for the county. Steve Jocks, who I used to work with the county, does an amazing job. He got back to us, we are on the list. The company that does, the county subs that out to a private company, he reached out to them, told them make us a priority. So within the next week or two, some of the shade trees that are on county roads, which are their responsibility, will be getting addressed. And I just do want to thank John and the whole crew, but between John and Tyler, this livestream, I will advise you, in Hasbro Heights, where one of the councilmen, this runs thousands of dollars a year, it'll be, you know, the cost of the Borough of Allen Dell compared to, you can check with other local municipalities, pay for this service.
Right.
Substantial savings and the same professional quality as you see. So kudos again to everybody from the, Michelle's, and Michelle, you know, is the head, once you won't take credit for it. We have an amazing Clerk's Office.
I know.
They do a lot of great stuff.
Right, yeah, no, I agree. I second and third on that. And Ron, you and I speak periodically throughout the day, and sometimes it's the first call for me and the last call at 10:30 at night, when you're driving home, or and what you do in one day, because I know I'll throw the, you know, say, well, how about this and this? And at the end of the day, you know, it's all done, or you're on it, so, you know.
The elephant pickup today, that's between us, but that was, not a real elephant, but we picked up an elephant.
Right, and the other, and the other things which, yeah, which we needed to address. I mean, really, just collectively as a team, this is a great town, and everyone cares, and we're in it for the right reason, and, you know, it was day like today, we're proud to be the mayor, just proud to be a part of the system. So, thank you very much. Ray, I don't have anything.
Just a motion to adjourn, and we wait five minutes?
Yeah, so for everyone, 7:55, I'm going to request a motion to adjourn the work session, then we'll come back on at 8 o'clock. So motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. We'll be back in five minutes. Great, thank you very much. The time is now 8:00 PM, Thursday, July 22, 2021. This is the regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall for the first time in 16 months. Yay, agreed, agreed. We are happy to have you back in the audience, we truly are. This is, we played to an empty Borough Hall for, right, for 16 months, and we're happy to have you back. We are also live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. If you're doing that, you can't speak, you can't comment, but you can watch, which is, people had asked for it for many years, and we're happy to finally bring that service. At this time, I'd ask the public present to mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the July 20, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great, thank you very much, Michelle. If you could all please join me and rising to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free and just as for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wolsinski absent, and Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you very much. Public comment on agenda items only. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on agenda items? Not seeing anyone? Okay. Presentation by the Allen Dell Water Committee, but, so you're going to go down there? Are you going to go down there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to set the stage a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Before I turn this portion of the meeting over to Councilwoman Homan, I want to thank the committee for their tireless work, which we discussed a little bit in the work session, but not only on this potential sale, but also for keeping our water system operating effectively and efficiently, and our drinking water safe. Each member contributes a vital part to the strong team, and I would like to recognize their efforts. Committee Chair, Councilwoman Homan, tireless work. Councilman Sasso, Ron Kissner, Lane Simon, Alyssa Mayer, Mike Freeland, Ray Wiss, Tom Borji, Ryan Serbo, Jeff Pichonich, our water operator who just retired, and his replacements, James Fahey and William Hahn. It takes a village, and, you know, this has been a real team effort. So thank you to all. And Councilwoman Homan, I know you're prepared for a presentation that we're waiting, that we're looking forward to watching, and the stage is yours.
Love water, right? Yes, and certainly everything that Mayor Bernstein says is true. You know, I often find this, and of course, talking about water, but the reality is we have an unbelievable team, and water is very complicated, which is part of the reason why we are where we are today. And anybody that hasn't had an opportunity to watch the five presentations that we just have put together and delivered over the last year, have definitely heard a few from the public, if you haven't had a chance to look at this, because they kind of build stories about how we got here tonight, and that's, Ray Wiss had explained. Tonight is, is in many ways, a procedural process that we're moving forward with the presentation of ordinance 2110. And how do I make sure that I'm clear?
I feel like I'm hosting a game show. Sir, would you like to participate? Anyway, you know, what is being presented to the council tonight in that ordinance 2110? And the first thing is that the purchase agreement, which I'd spoken about at our last council meeting and at the presentation, that's where Suez had given and responded to our RFB, and they gave an offer, and the purchase agreement is really the legal translation of that offer. And so since the time where they were declared the highest responsible bidder, we as a team have been working with Suez to make sure that our understanding of all of those words and the bid specs are all mutually agreed upon, so that we have a legal document. And we feel good about that. It's on, it's available in the Borough Clerk's Office, and I will be talking about the main parts of that tonight. The ballot, the other, the second part is that the actual ballot question will be approved for us to send to the Bergen County Clerk, to have put onto the ballot for the new to have put onto the ballot for the November 2nd election, yeah, general election. And I had to put it a second way and say, if the ordinance passes tonight, and I will be asking my fellow councilpersons to approve this ordinance, we will have the question to sell the Allen Dell Water System to SUEZ for $18 million will go on to the November 2nd ballot. And if the, if our voters have a majority of yes, then the sale will be executed to SUEZ after that referendum question on November 2nd. So the Water Committee as a whole, we do recommend this sale to SUEZ. And, you know, we can look at it in a bunch of different ways, but certainly from an economic perspective, $18 million coming into the Borough of Allen Dell is going to be incredibly helpful. And the economics of just managing the system also changes. Because currently, when there is something unexpected that happens that hasn't been put, I'm looking at Lisa as our CFO, that hasn't been put in our capital budget, we have to figure out where to pull those monies from. So, and the biggest part about the economics at this point that I've talked about in previous meetings is this PFOS, it's a, you know, it's measured in parts per trillion and we have low levels, but it's at the borderline. And so we do need to plan to build a PFOS treatment facility. This will, if this sale goes through, will become SUEZ's responsibility. And they have the economies of scale. I mean, they're not building just one. They're, they're in the process already in many areas where they have higher numbers of PFOS of actually already constructing them. And I have learned a lot from speaking with the SUEZ team. Second is the technical, you know, knowledge. We have an amazing team as we've talked about. We have a great Borough engineer. We have Ron Kistner. We have Lane Simon in the DPW. The reality is, water isn't our business. Water is SUEZ's business. So the technical knowledge that SUEZ has for today is very important. And then, as we've talked about in other meetings, we want, as New Jersey residents, we want the NJDEP and we want the EPA to be looking at our water. These PFOS chemicals, you know, they, they've been present for a very long time. And the NJDEP has set some of the strictest limits in the nation and that's important. But there will be further requirements. There are lead and copper requirements. We don't have a lead, we've not, our lead, you know, results in our water have been fine. But we have a lot of expenses for regulations that we have currently that in the future will only bring more. And as a, as a person who drinks the water right out of the tap, we want that. So. And let's talk about SUEZ. Why is SUEZ good besides being the highest responsible bidder? SUEZ, you know, manages, manages our water currently and water is such a precious resource. But it is challenging to distribute and to treat and to ensure that we have good water when it comes out of the tap. But SUEZ began as Hackensack Water Company over, you know, 152 years ago. So this is a company that has been in business and managing water for quite some time. The headquarters is, you know, 10 miles away, right in Hallworth. That's a good thing for us, you know, for SUEZ to have been the highest responsible bidder. They are close. They're in our backyard. They provide drinking water currently as, you know, right now they operate and maintain our system. But they currently supply water to over 1 million New Jersey homes. They have employees and this is part of what's important. Like I have spent a tremendous amount of time learning and understanding and I like the science of it. But they have whole departments that are dedicated to the regulations and the treatments. And these regulations will increase. The economies of scale, as I spoke of earlier, that's a great thing. Again, that we're building one, they can, you know, do things less expensively. They can buy pipe for the streets less expensively than we can just because of the economies of scale. And they also have crews to manage when we have water main breaks. You know, nothing like having a break in the middle of the night and well, maybe we couldn't get a crew together. And if we had to maintain our own system, that's what we'd have to be doing. And SUEZ has operated and managed our system since 2013. And that is a huge benefit because they know what they're getting and we are already familiar with working with SUEZ. So it is a nice match. So I can say, you know, in this part of the slide, that Allen Dell, we've managed really well with our water. We've been fortunate. The Allen Dell water is excellent. But it's going to get more complicated and our knowledge and our resources are limited. So looking at the benefits of the actual sale, $18 million is a lot of money. It's a one-time cash infusion and that's certainly something that sets us ahead because it will allow us to pay off all of our debt as notes and bonds come, you know, come due. And additionally, it will allow us to have remaining funds for additional needs. And this isn't the place as we're talking about the ordinance as to what potentially we could be doing with that additional monies. And that's something that we also will need to be working with Lisa as our CFO and financial planners and our council as a whole as to where some of those additional funds will be placed. There's a 10-year rate plan. So this is something that the rates in the bid are defined for 10 years. It does need to be approved by the BPU. So that's the Board of Public Utilities. It's sorry, yeah, this is really a little tough. I feel like I'm dancing around. I'll jump through. But the Board of Public Utilities is the governmental, the governmental board that both does, you know, the gas, the electric and water for, and is allowed to be our watchdog as residents to ensure that we are not overcharged and also to ensure that these utilities, you know, are doing the right thing, spending the right investment into keeping infrastructure up, et cetera. So the BPU looks out for all, you know, all of the rate payers. So I want to go in and talk about this 10-year rate plan and I'll give, there's a little bit of one complicated twist. Not really that complicated for you guys, but in year two, so year one, we have a 0% rate increase. We did have a 10% rate increase, January 1 of this year, 10%, just remember that. And there will be more if we, if we do not sell our system, for sure. In year two, there will be a 2% rate increase on just the base rate. And this, that's only the first 9,000 gallons that, that's the minimum amount you can purchase. So there'd be 2% on that, which looking at what we, you know, what we pulled in in 2020, that's a 0.5% rate increase across the whole board. Year three would be a 0%, year four, 0%, year five, we would see a 5% rate increase. Year six, 0%, year seven, 5%, year eight, 0%, nine, 0, and year 10, 0. And then probably we could be looking at, you know, they do, they go to take what are called rate cases to the BPU, usually about every 30 months. So I have a little, some little arrows down here, these little green arrows, because when you see on the ballot, we actually do list the proposed rate schedule and it's at 0.5%, but I just, I'm so, such a stickler about being transparent to all, you know, all of us that live here in Allen Dell, it is 2% on the base rate and it would be a 0.5% overall. So just so that's clear. The SUEZ commitment to the infrastructure, which is really important in the treatment and the distribution. First off, as I talked about earlier, the PFOS treatment to keep Allen Dell at or below the NJDEP levels for PFOS. And I had had, we, our Water Committee, and I spoke about it in some of our meetings, that we did do a preliminary pilot study and the minimum number that we'd be looking at would be 2.8 million. And probably, I mean, SUEZ actually estimated it close to $7 million. So that's important that they would then be taking that over as part of their commitment. They have a lot of additional things listed to be doing. Many of them, they came to our Water Committee, I'm looking at our, our council members at this point. They did come and ask to say, hey, spend $500,000 on upgrading the SCADA system. We're like, no, no, we don't, we don't have that type of money just to be throwing around. But we, these are things that will help the system work more efficiently and that benefits both SUEZ and ourselves. We also, as talked about with the lead and copper rule, there's new things coming out where the estimate would be three quarters of a million dollars in today's dollars if we need to just do some of the record-keeping that is necessary. That's in some of my other presentations if you want to look. The minimum RFB water infrastructure was that whoever was bidding had to commit to spend at least $300,000 a year annually on infrastructure. The commitment from SUEZ is well beyond that. And it makes sense for them because again, it helps the system run more smoothly. The other highlights from the purchase agreement that I want to share and I, you know, the council has been involved along the whole way. I like to talk about water a lot, so anybody I can get their ear on, they will hear it. But I just want to make sure I remind them that SUEZ is covering up to $150,000 in transaction costs, of which 50,000 comes if this ordinance passes, which is helpful because we need to have experts involved in making sure that not only we have all the pieces that we need, but that we do it correctly. And that's where Ryan Servo has been unbelievable in helping in every way, but certainly making sure that we meet all the requirements of this being a, you know, a process that follows all the regulations too. And then we'll get the other 100,000 should the referendum pass. Then the second part, which I think is super important I'm talking about tonight, is that we do have a first right of refusal should any of the properties not be used. And I think, Mark, you had asked about the wells and saying that if for some reason SUEZ was decide that they wouldn't want to use a particular well like down at New Street where we own the property, that we would have the first right of refusal to purchase that property back at fair market value. So I think that's a benefit for Allen Dell to have in the future. And again, you know, should that not be used for the treatment and, you know, water distribution operations and treatment. Then also, and I don't know how many people know this here, I know that our council does, but we do have communications equipment that is on the top of the Ramsey tank as well as at the Fairhaven area. So that will, we have access to continue to have communication equipment on there. We won't have to pay a rental fee or anything like that. So that was an important component that we wanted to make sure that we kept. Also, we will have the opportunity, currently Allen Dell pays itself for any water that we use in our municipal facilities, but we will be able to have water at no charge in our municipal facilities for five years, which is, you know, any, any amount of money saved is always good. So what's the question on the ballot? And this is the actual question. It's very simple. You know, shall the Borough of Allen Dell and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, be authorized to sell its water supply, storage, treatment and distribution system, commonly known as the water system, to SUEZ New Jersey Inc. for a sum of $18 million? So that's what will be on the ballot, the simple press yes or press no. Additionally though, what will be in, and I know it's like a lot of words, but I felt like I didn't want to parcel it out. This is the explanation, you know, around that. And this is where I was talking about what the rate would look like. Again, should the BPU approve those rates? But just saying, it talks about the majority of the legal votes cast in the Borough are yes. Then we will sign, we will have this purchase agreement executed and we will sell it for $18 million. There is the second section and it says, upon the completion of the rate schedule approved by the B, the Borough, the Board of Public Utilities. And then if the majority of the legal casts in the Borough are no, then we will retain the system and it is an explanation that we will immediately raise rates in order to cover some of the things that need to happen, the technology and maintenance activities. So hopefully, I mean, we worked a lot with that as an explanation and it's, it's clear. So I look forward to it being on the ballot. Final comments, I feel, then I want to make sure again that I speak to my council people in particular, that SUEZ, the SUEZ offer is advantageous to Allen Dell based upon the purchase price, $18 million coming into Allen Dell, the proposed rate structure, which even if the BPU were to, you know, say it needs to be increased a little bit more, it's still our least expensive utility for sure. The proposed infrastructure repairs, particularly the PFOS, the water management experience, and I have talked to a lot of people at a lot of meetings and people, you know, water, I shouldn't say, environmental engineers outside of the area. And SUEZ has a good reputation. They've worked in water for a long time. And then again, the likelihood of future water regulations and just making sure that we have somebody that really knows how to deal with it. And as New Jersey residents, again, I support those regulations. My other final comment is again, that the purchase agreement reflects the RFB as returned by SUEZ. And I think that the question and explanations are clear. I hope you agree. And certainly we're going to be having public meetings as we move into the fall. In particular, we've talked about maybe having one more virtual one in August. But, you know, sometimes people are away. We want to make sure that residents can come, they can attend. I'm glad to see you guys here. I don't know if you're here for the water, but, you know, I feel like I really want to make sure people are talking about it and questions or concerns, you know, can be, can be addressed and that we can work together. And SUEZ wants that also because, you know, they want to make sure that they're moving in in a positive way. So my email is always there. I, you know, I try to always make sure I respond. Some, and if I ever don't, like if I miss something, please try me again. Like maybe there has been, I got a mass inload and, and I want to make sure that our team collectively is available for people to understand and feel good about this process. Do you?
So, so thank you very much and, you know, thank you for everything you've done and for your presentation tonight. So procedurally, to those that are here, to those that have questions, I'm going to ask Michelle to read the title of the ordinance and then we will open the floor for public comment and questions at that time. So your time is soon to come.
Do I go up?
Yes, you come on up. Thank you very much. Great. And Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-10.
Sure. The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on July 8, 2021 and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. It's ordinance 21-10, an ordinance of the Borough of Allen Dell and the County of Bergen, New Jersey approving an agreement of sale between the Borough and SUEZ Water New Jersey Inc. for the sale of the Borough's water supply, treatment and distribution system and authorizing a proposal to be printed on the ballot for consideration by the voters within the Borough at the general election on November 2nd, 2021, providing for the sale of the Borough's water supply, treatment and distribution system to SUEZ Water New Jersey Inc.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So now I will, we will open the floor to the, for public comment on ordinance 21-10. Come on up, state your name and address for the record and the floor is yours.
Andrea Pennington, 45, Bonniway. Excellent job, Liz.
Oh, thank you.
I just have a question with regard to, we live in a neighborhood where that water tower is on Fair, by Fairhaven. And we would like, I'm speaking pretty much on behalf of the neighbors that live all in that area, you to either consider recommending, I know this, this has been out for bid already and the proposal has been done, but other towns such as Ridgewood, Midland Park, they have water towns within their neighborhood and they are all painted green to blend in. And ours is like 1970s blue. And so here's an opportunity that SUEZ can now, we can get that color changed. Because aesthetically, I mean, it's an eyesore for everybody that lives in that area. I know that people who have lived on Lee Court have had problems selling their homes because of it and that's really not right. And so we would like to propose, I mean, it's a coat of paint and it's a labor, but if you would consider working that into your proposal possibly or discuss that with them, I think it's a reasonable request because other towns all have their water towers painted, you know, to blend in with the community, whether even if it was brown or really they have it, the ones I've seen are in green.
I can totally commit to you that we will talk to them about it. And I think that, I was trying to remember what the painting was on.
I was going to say, I think it's in their capital plan.
Like which year is it in though? I don't remember. But absolutely, that is not a big ask for us to talk with them about. They will be at public meetings. I mean, at some point it would need to be repainted, how quickly. But we definitely can speak with them about it and that's.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Green? Is green the color or was I, or brown? Oh. Oh. I cannot answer that question. I was not a part of it when I was saying it. It'd be interesting if we have a swatch somewhere and it says sky.
Right. Thank you for your comment.
But yes, we will talk.
Anyone else in the public for public comment on ordinance 21-10? Mark? Mark, and then Ken.
Mark Savastano, 22, Vreeland Place. I want to just mention that most of my concerns have been addressed, both here, or I shouldn't say here because it was virtual, but in conversations and in council meetings regarding the ownership of the actual water. And I took some time, and I reviewed the New Jersey Water Supply Privatization Act and the Water Supply Management Act. And in the conversation that I had with Councilwoman Homan and Mayor Bernstein, they assured me that this is not the case, that Suez would not own the water that's in the ground, and it would still be governed by the NJDEP as to how much water is taken out and to whom it can be supplied to. And I just wanted to state my understanding on the record and have you confirm that my understanding is correct, that that is the case. I think that's a concern of mine.
Ray and Ryan, and although I, as part of that conversation, and both Councilwoman Homan and I said yes, but when we look to, we are flanked by the experts, and both Ryan and Ray both acknowledge yes, so.
Yeah. And the reason why I asked that question on the record, because I'm sure other residents would have that question. It's not just a concern of mine. And in the same vein, I'm certainly not against the principle of selling the water supply. That was my major concern. Not happy with the system being privatized, but expect that it would happen because it's fiscally responsible for the borough and in general. I did have some reservations about it being sold to a foreign-owned company, but that's part of the process of bidding. One of the things that did raise a concern with me was part of the bidding process, and I wanted to address that here. It seems that some of the information would have been available to Suez because they were already running the operating and maintenance contract, and the other bidders would not have been aware of that information. And I wanted, not just speaking off the cuff, I did read the question and answers that were issued on May 5, and three of them specifically addressed that particular concern. And that is about the detailed asset listing, the valuation study performed, and the feasibility study for treatment of PFAS and PFOA compounds, and that you did have that information, but it would not be supplied to the bidders. So my question is, would Suez have had any access to that information because they were already running as an operator and maintenance contract for Allendale?
So Suez was, we did not release the feasibility study to Suez or any of the other bidders.
For the very reason that you're addressing. And while, while one, I guess, could argue that Suez being the operator would have a higher comfort level in our system than someone who was bidding as a nonoperator in terms of proprietary information, and I know Ryan worked very hard on this, making sure that there was no disclosure to create that imbalance that you're talking about. And then the process also had in it, and I think this is a playing field equalizer, an opportunity for the bidders to ask questions. And as pertaining to proprietary information, the answer was, nobody's getting that, but other questions, any of the bidders could ask, to the extent that there was a feeling that Suez might know something in the, I'll call it, the public domain more than another bidder. So I think the process was designed to take into account the very concerns that you're expressing.
Okay. And Ray, if I could, I think that very question came from Suez. They knew that there was a feasibility study done. It was not shared with them, and they wanted a copy of it. So to your point, in fairness, I think the team was abundantly fair in how the information was shared.
Okay.
And also, both myself and Lane spent an entire day with both other companies who were operators. One of them brought up five representatives, very, very nice people, very detailed. We did all the wells, we did the Fairhaven, we did Ramsey. Lane, Lane has lived this stuff his whole, you know, so many years, he's so knowledgeable. They left very comfortably, other knowledge. And the other company didn't stay as long, came with two people only, but they're local, and they kind of knew our system just by talking to people. The other two, you know, one of the guys, the one company that did bid, came up with five representatives, they were very professional. A pleasure to deal with, and they saw everything.
Yeah. My question was more in the sense of, would it have been a knowledge that they could have access to just because they were running the system already? Certainly, you wouldn't provide it to them outright, but could they have known and would it have affected their bids?
I can say that the second, one of the other items you mentioned is evaluation study, which was solely done by the borough and kept by the borough. It was essentially your engineer's estimate for the bid, so we would never have released that to anyone, and no one outside the evaluation team had that information.
So by, by performing operations and maintenance, they wouldn't know what the levels of PFAS and PFOA?
Oh, no, no. That, the, the, the public information, and actually, in the very first presentation that's on the website, I actually show people how to go in and go to NJ Water Watch, because that is public information for everybody. And you can look up any, you know, town you're in, and you can look up all, so all of the testing results is completely public information. And that's something absolutely is, and I would assume that they, they should have, you know, all of the companies that picked up bids would look at all of that information.
So what they were, you were requesting of them was how to treat it specifically?
A proposal, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, and Ryan, you can correct me, part of this, as far as utilities are concerned, is a bit of a guessing game because I think they're anticipating that the New Jersey regulations in the near term will become stricter. So, so all the water utilities are probably doing assessments on the PFAS treatment going forward and projecting for every system, that if, you know, new regulations come into effect, we're going to have to be, you know, treat the water. It's almost a statewide guessing game at this point in time.
Yes, yes. Okay. And the reason that I was asking those questions was the disparity in the bids, and we, we did have a short discussion about that. Since their bid was twice the next highest bid, I was wondering what would the attraction to such a small water system be to Suez, aside from the fact that they're already here?
I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you two cents, and it's just an opinion, you know, and, and hopefully, this doesn't make Suez change, you know, change their mind or shake their head. I think they didn't want anybody in their playground.
Okay. That's.
Allendale is perfectly situated. We're among many different municipalities, and that's why making the Allendale system efficient is beneficial for whatever water company comes in the future to these areas. It's expensive, and yeah, I think they made a great decision.
And also, to the point, you know, the second bid, although far away from the first bid, was right in the sweet spot of the valuation study, so it was not very far away from what we expected things to look like.
And that was my understanding, that their bid, the second bid was right about what you would expect.
And they did their homework, that's, you know, that's not an unsophisticated company, so.
Right. Yeah. So, and I just want to understand where we're at today, and that is, this is going to be voted upon. And if it's approved, then any other details will be available to the public about the bid?
Most, most of that, and I think, as mentioned in her presentation, the, the contract as it presently exists is available for public scrutiny. It contains most, if not all, of the business terms of the transaction, but I think that they were, you know, more than outlined this evening, and will be further discussed in presentations in the fall. Most of the other stuff is the land that Ryan and I live in. It's the legalese, as Liz mentioned, to make sure that the RFB has been translated into a legally enforceable document.
So the, the, the value can't change anymore?
No, no. The only, the only real contingency was the one, I think, that Liz mentioned, that, that obviously rate structure and, you know, part of the bid was to try to lock in the, the rate increases for the 10-year duration. That is always subject to BPU approval ultimately, so that's, that's still out there as a contingency.
Isn't being negotiated.
Yeah. I mean, there is the typical, you know, terms in a contract that if, if something happens unanticipated between, you know, now and the time of the closing, that there could be nominal, I'll call it nominal price adjustments.
Just like a house.
On contingencies, right.
Okay.
Right. The roof blows over the house before the closing, you know, the current owner gets stuck with that. But, but short of those type of nuances, the RFB is the RFB.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And I also want to thank Michelle, while I'm up here, for providing the information that I had asked for ahead of normal scheduling, and I'm very much appreciated.
That's great.
I hate to say it, but I enjoyed reading.
I love hearing you.
That makes two of you.
Thank you, Mary.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Great. Thank you. Great. Ken, did you have a, did you have a comment?
Anyway, this is a like, I'd be ready to ask questions.
That's right. That's right. And.
It actually is, but they run a much less formal process.
Right. And the chairs aren't going anywhere.
Yeah. So, Ken Pennington, 45, Bonnyway. So I actually have a question about the land behind our house that the, at least, I don't know which one it is. Is that the Ramsey water tower? I assume it is.
No, that's the Fairhaven tank. The Ramsey tank is elevated and actually is in Ramsey. That's why it's called the Ramsey. Fairhaven is the one that's by your home.
Got it. Okay. So my understanding, Allendale owns that land right now, right?
Correct.
If the water system is sold, will the ownership of the land, of that land, pass over to Suez?
Correct.
Okay. What is that land zoned for? What could it be zoned for?
That is a great question.
And a question that we have spent hours and hours and days talking about.
Is that in the five presentations?
No, so I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Ryan answer this.
And actually, and I didn't mention it when you were up here, Mark, you had alluded to it at an earlier meeting, a very similar question. And because of the concern that if at some future time, technology changes, the way Suez is doing business, the, the, any, any of the aspects of the utility are no longer needed, including, let's say, the water tank. We didn't want to put the borough and the adjacent homeowners in a position where Suez could say, well, we no longer lead that, we're gonna, you know, build something else there.
A windmill factory.
Yeah, and change. So, so I don't want to say that the agreement is that it will be deed restricted into inutility, but that's what Liz was talking about before, that if at any point in time, it is not to be used as part of the operation as it currently is being used, we get the right to repurchase it, and it is so deed restricted that it can only be used for its present purposes, there would only be one purchaser in town, and that would be reverting the property back to us. So we have tried to take, I think, prudent safeguards to make sure that the scenario that you might worry about, that if they didn't need it, what could all of a sudden wind up in my backyard someday? The, the notion, and in the agreement, there's a reference to this, the property will be deed restricted for only water utility operations.
Whether we buy it back or not.
Or not.
As I saw, we have the option, but not the obligation to buy it back.
Correct.
So if we choose not to buy it back, that, that, that land is still restricted to, I'm sorry, what did you say?
To utility service.
So what's the definition of utility?
Oh, you were saying inutility, like meaning it's useless, yeah.
Yeah.
That we are going to put in deed restrictions. We've just been talking about that, and they agreed at a conference two, two days ago. So there will be deed restrictions. We haven't worked out the, the fine print or the details, but that's, that's the concept.
And it was a hot-button issue, as the mayor mentioned, in the negotiations, because obviously, they would have liked the flexibility to do what you might be concerned about.
Right.
That if they didn't need it, to be able to sell it off and, you know, whether it became a residential development or anything else, it could potentially impact the neighborhood.
When are these details going to be finalized?
They're actually in, I mentioned, the contract is available for inspection. That provision has now been negotiated and agreed to. If you got the contract at the clerk's office, you would see that provision is in there.
So it is finalized.
So the provisions in there, I think you were just asking, when will the deed, when will the dating actually be done? And that will be in the coming.
Right. Yeah, well, well, I mean, it's all subject to the voter approval of the entirety of.
So what you're saying is that the deed is in there, the details are still being, yet to be worked out?
No, the, the details are worked out.
Or what the definition is of inutility, or what exactly is uncertain at this point? I apologize.
Only that the entire transaction has to be approved by the voters on November 2. If approved, that restriction that I just mentioned to you, that Ryan and I were talking about, that has been agreed to. So as part of the, the closing, the transaction itself, the deeds by which the property would be conveyed to Suez, will be conveyed with the restrictions in the deed.
Exhibit F.
And the restrictions and their nature and their definition are finalized in the contract.
Absolutely.
When you, when you look at the contract, if you look at Exhibit F, you'll find the language pretty easily. It's restricted to water utility service only. That's it. Can't be used for any other purpose.
Great. Thank you.
And just so you know, your, your mayor, your, your council people, and Ray fought really hard for this provision, and it was a forethought long before the RFB was ever issued. It was one, something we spent a lot of time over, and we conveyed that to Suez after the bids were in, in order to make sure this provision stayed in the contract.
Yeah, thank you. I know you guys have been really good about making sure that, that land, especially larger tracts of land in the, in the borough, you know, remain, as Allendale wants it to remain as opposed to.
That's right.
Okay, so thank you for that, and thanks for the clarification. I have to admit, I'd much rather look at a sky-blue water tower than a bunch of condos.
Right.
You may have to fight in the neighborhood about sky blue.
Yeah.
I don't like her smell.
I'm not gonna get into the, I'm not gonna get into the color.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Great, Ken. Thank you, and thank you for your comments and your questions. Anyone else from the public have a question or a public comment? On 21-10, seeing no one, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading, ordinance 21-10. Notice of same shall be published according to law.
Me, Homan.
Second.
Yay, Steve.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wosinski is absent.
Great. Thank you. Now we move on, continue with the agenda, the consent agenda. The four items, 21-193, 21-194, 21-195, and 21-196, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Great. Second?
Homan. Sorry. I'm excited.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent, and Councilwoman Wosinski is absent.
Great. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We did the committee reports, we did the staff reports. Public comment? So open the meeting the last time to public comment on any item at all. Mr. Savastano?
Mayor, I just wanted to speak briefly about the Green Team without taking up too much time. I want to thank Ron for the letter that he sent back to me. I was looking for guidance and appreciation of the, the concern that I had, and we're going to move forward on contacting those other organizations and hopefully correct that situation. Also, I have arranged a meeting with the county to continue my efforts for styrofoam recycling. We'll be meeting with two of the members and five of our members of the Bergen Hub to continue that effort. So I just wanted to share that with the.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Yes? Come on up, and state your name and address for the record.
Jan Veschi, 55, Bonnyway.
A pleasure to see you tonight.
Thank you. By the way, I'm very impressed.
Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Jan Veschi, 55, Bonny Way.
A pleasure to see you tonight.
Thank you. By the way, I'm very impressed with all the work you've done with the water. It's amazing.
Now I get to meet you, now I know who's sending the email. It's like, I don't know who that is.
You're probably aware of the issue regarding the condition of what I call the Lee Court Water Tower property, you call it the Fairhaven. I've tried several times to bring it to your attention by emailing, sending registered letters, not getting receipts from them, sending duplicate letters, trying to call Michelle, but I haven't been able to, I don't think, get my point across. What I'd like to reiterate is the falling trees on that property are extremely dangerous. They fall even on a clear, non-windy day. The ground must be very moist, they uproot. They've been very destructive in my yard. They also have a negative impact on the property value of my home for which we pay over $26,000 a year in real estate tax. We've not opened our pool this year because our fence has been so destroyed that we can't open the pool. And to get it fixed, only to have another tree fall on it seems sort of silly. I have photos for you to look at. I don't know if you want to pass them around, but this is what it looks like from my backyard. It's a mess, a terrible mess. These are photos of trees that are just leaning, waiting to fall. You just never know, every time the wind blows, what's going to fall down next. And then I also have some photos of what the ground looks like back there. It's covered in uprooted indentries. So I'm formally asking that this property be cleaned up. I learned just this morning that if SUEZ purchase is approved, then they will become the owner of the property. And I really hate to say this, but unless something is done, I don't know what else to do but to have an attorney get in touch with you or to notify SUEZ of the liability that they're taking on because it is a liability. People walk their dogs there, kids ride their bikes there. It needs help badly. So thank you very much for your attention and we'll see what happens.
Great, and thank you for your public comment.
Do you want to take those back?
Maybe just to pass it down first? Okay, great. So, and thank you and we appreciate you coming. And I know, and the manner in which you addressed us and you brought your pictures. Ron, do you want to?
I'd like to respond, yes.
Okay.
There was trees reported last year that we could spend, we spent money taking down the trees. Myself, actually, as Mr. Weiss explained, you know, we dealt with a number of issues. This is one of the issues.
And can you hear?
Can you hear me?
Okay, good.
I've never been told I couldn't be heard. That'd be a first.
You're like a wallflower, right?
I have to go with my shyness. But, you know, we responded, actually, we drafted a letter today. Like Ray helped me, Mr. Weiss helped me draft the letter. Again, my position on it, it is not a, it's not a natural area for people walking. I would recommend if they are people walking, I do spend time up there. Of course, it's a tank. I will post signs just for insurance purposes, you know, that it's not a, you know, area for walking or riding bikes. It says that we did take down the trees that the resident mentioned to us were concerned. It is a wooded area. Fence-wise, if there's any damage to the fence, I thought my position was, and Mr. Weiss confirms, and so does Jeff, our insurance risk manager, the resident can put a claim in, their insurance would contact us and then we would, you know, our insurance within all, we'd be responsible. You know, I'm more than willing to assist and help, but my responsibility as the administrator and director of operations is to, you know, get anything approved that I'm not, you know, supposed to do on a regular basis.
Right, and there are several issues to the issue. I mean, there are sub-issues, right? There are trees that if you, we do have a certified arborist and goes out and if there are any trees that are dangerous, those trees are removed, right? Correct?
Different. This is a wooded area.
Right.
None of the, there's nothing that presents a danger now. I will go out again.
No, but if.
Yeah, yeah.
If there were, right. For the trees that have fallen and that are in the, and that are on the other side of the fence, we don't have the resources nor are we so inclined to be.
We would not, any trees that falls in the wood, no, I don't. It actually becomes an environmental issue as well, but a financial issue. We don't have the capability of, you know, cleaning up the air for such a large area like that.
Okay, and then for trees that have fallen and have damaged their fence, we've discussed this, Councilman Strouch has just discussed this. The protocol was that the homeowner is to put that claim through their insurance.
Yeah, and their insurance company and our insurance company on damage claims was sorted out. I mean, that's why we both have the insurance. The disconnect that I guess I'm hearing this evening is a concern expressed about trees that may be subject to falling near-term and whether our arborist either confirms or doesn't agree with that opinion. Right, so I guess the concern being expressed is that at any moment, another tree may fall, be it on the fence or on a person or on a dog. And either from the borough's vantage point, the way that we confirm whether we concur in that position is that our arborist looks at a tree and says, you know, respectfully, we disagree or respectfully, we agree. So I think that that's all that the borough could do is to see if there's a feeling that that concern is one of an imminent or a diseased tree that should be addressed, in which case we would address it. And I think Ron is saying that we have in the past addressed some of them and whether there are more to be addressed or not, it may be a point of agreement or disagreement based on what the arborist tells us.
I just want to be clear, I want to be clear. Trees that are inside this area from the residents' homes, backyards to the tank in that wooded area, trees will fall. I'm not concerned about those because all they will do is post signage. I don't see, I see, once, I see people walking, not a large, again, any one person. We can post signs, you know, for insurance purposes and for safety reasons. You shouldn't be walking here, it's not a walking path. There's plenty of walking areas up Preswood Lake or behind Ice Bowl or something, but.
And I was thinking more about the comment that, well, we haven't put our fence back up because we're concerned about other trees falling through. I guess the arborist would be the one to judge whether that, from his vantage point, is a bona fide present concern or not.
Yeah, I know, Paul, I can meet, we have two arborists on that I work with that we have next week.
Although just meant for public comment, you are here, you've taken the time, you've written us. If you want to come up, if you want to, if you have another follow-up comment, I'd be happy to give you the opportunity.
First of all, I did have the tree guy come whenever and he suggested there were three trees that should be removed. So my request was that they be removed. What they did was cut the trees at the base, these are huge trees, and left them on top of the tree that uprooted into my backyard last August during a tropical storm. The damage isn't just to the fence. I mean, the root of this tree was this big. I have a picture of my son standing in the hole that it made in my yard. So it uprooted whatever shrubbery we had there to try to cover the tank. And I don't consider that removing them, you know, they're just there. And it, I don't think that I have a right to hire somebody to come cut the town trees. If I have to, I guess I'm going to have to because I don't know what to do. I mean, it's the most horrible, you can see from the pictures, I hope, that it's an untenable situation.
Right, and you're speaking to the visual part of seeing. I'm not minimizing, I'm just trying to clarify, right?
Yeah, for one.
Right.
And also, what else is going to fall? I mean, when the trees are leaning like this, you know, they're going to uproot one of these days.
Trees that were removed, that are, I'd say removed when you take them down, they're no longer a danger, you're concerned about.
They're no longer a danger, now they're just an eyesore.
They're on our property. I can't, financially to remove, you know.
Right.
It's just, it's.
It needs a chainsaw and somebody to cut them up.
Right.
And I don't know if I'd even be allowed to do that since it's not my property.
Right.
Whatever, I mean, you have my point and I'm not a happy gambler.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved to comment.
Thank you, Ed. Second?
Second.
Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much.